This time I will call you. May 4, 2020, Davie County Commissioner's Special Call Meeting to Order. I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in an indication, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father, we come here today and we acknowledge, Father, your grace, your mercy, and your goodness. Thank you for placing us in this freest of all lands. Thank you for placing us in the great county and community that you placed us in. Father, we thank you for men and women that serve on battlefields today that we might be free. We thank you for men and women in our law enforcement and EMS and our fire departments that keep our homes and our streets safe. I thank you for each of these commissioners that so diligently serve and our staff, Father that serves, and serves with commitment and purpose. So, Lord, today, give us wisdom, give us discernment, give us boldness, give us courage to carry out the agenda that you've placed before us. And, Father, may we always acknowledge, Father, that you are our Creator, you're our Sustainer, and, Father, you're the one that gives true freedom and liberty. And we pray this prayer in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, if we can all say the Pledge of Allegiance in unison. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the flag. The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands.
To the Republic which stands.
Which stands.
One nation, one nation under God.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Amen. All right. Let's start along the agenda of the Ethics and Conflict Disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Yes, in pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168, Day 86, the Davie County Board of Commissioners Code of Ethics adopted December 2, 2019. I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual, potential, or perceived conflicts of interest respect to any matter on the proposed agenda, which come before the Board for a vote on them today. If so, please speak up and let the Board know that it's time before the agenda is adopted. No one speaking up? I conclude there's no actual perceived or potential conflicts of interest by any Board member.
Thank you, Ed. All right, this time entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
A move.
And who was that?
James.
Okay, James.
I'll have a second. Mark will second.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
All right, all in favor? Renninger votes yet?
Aye.
Okay, Mark Jones?
Yes.
Benita Finney?
Yes.
Terry Renninger?
Yes.
James Blakely?
Yes.
Richard Poindexter?
Yes.
Watch out, because I'm liable to go in reverse order next time.
Sneaky that way. All right. Okay, moving along, public comments. Has anyone, Mr. Eller, has anyone called in to public comment?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Moore, your Clerk to the Board, Mr. Vogler, Attorney, and myself as Manager have received no public comments via voicemail or email at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have a presentation on the COVID-19 response. I'll call on Mr. Eller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to first let Suzanne Wright give you a quick update as to what some statistics look like. Ms. Wright's obviously very busy, she and her staff right now, so she's going to do her update and then get back to what they're doing now, and then we'll continue with some updates that are COVID-19 related. But, Ms. Wright, are you on the phone and ready to give your update?
I am. Good afternoon and thank you. Just to give a local case report before moving into other updates, Davie has 31 total lab confirmed COVID-19 cases, and again, that's a cumulative total, the 31. We have two deaths. Four of the 31 cases remain sick, and 25 have met criteria to be released from isolation. In looking at a timeline for these cases, the first lab confirmed case in Davie was reported on March 22, and the last notification of a confirmed case was May 1. And we will likely to continue to have spikes and lulls in these cases as this continues on. A few things have changed since the last update, so I want to share the most recent changes. On April 26, the CDC updated its list of COVID-19 symptoms. The standing symptoms have been fever, cough, and shortness of breath. The six new symptoms added by the CDC include chills, repeated shaking with chills, muscle pain or body aches, headaches, sore throat, and new loss of taste or smell. So if you have cough, shortness of breath, or difficulty breathing, or at least two of the following symptoms, fever, chills, repeated shaking, muscle pain, headaches, sore throat, or begin noticing loss of taste or smell, then you could have COVID-19. We've seen positive cases with just headache and chills. We've seen some with just headache, and we've seen others that have every symptom just mentioned. So again, you don't have to have all the symptoms, but any combination should prompt you to reach out to your medical provider or call the Health Department about testing. The state also announced something new last week. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services started posting the names of facilities with ongoing COVID-19 outbreaks last week. Keep in mind, an outbreak is defined as two or more cases, so you only see names of facilities that have two or more cases. So the one that we had here would not have shown up because there was only one case in that facility. North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services will also be sharing the number of positive cases and COVID-19-associated deaths at these facilities, and they're going to break the positive cases down by category, showing positive cases by staff and residents in these facilities. So that's something new. The Davie County Health Department is collecting specimens for testing among priority populations, and this was determined by the state. These populations include healthcare workers or first responders who live in or work in Davie County, people who live in or have regular contact with a high-risk setting like long-term care facilities, homeless shelters, correctional facilities, and people at higher risk of severe illness. So the Health Department's been collecting specimens for several weeks now, and will continue to increase testing. Our focus moving forward will be on preparing a reopening strategy with continued emphasis on testing and contact tracing. And you're likely going to hear and see select pharmacies across the state get involved with testing in the near future. So I know that's probably coming in the very near future. I want to close by highlighting the work of all county departments and community partners during this time, but especially the work of the not-so-obvious first responders in our Health and Human Services Agency. Most people think of law enforcement, fire, EMS, and some hospital workers as first responders, and they are. And as you know, they do an incredible job, and we support them 100%. But most don't realize that many Health and Human Services staff members are first responders too. Davie County Health and Human Services staff members are in homes every day wearing protective gear and responding to emergencies related to abuse and neglect. Your county employees are also testing priority populations for COVID-19 in parking lots throughout the county, advising businesses and individuals on how to protect themselves, their workforce, and families, and taking care of other non-COVID-related health concerns for our patients. Your Health and Human Services staff members are providing meals for the elderly, serving our veterans, ensuring residents have access to food through our WIC and Food and Nutrition Services programs, especially those who have lost employment or been without work over the past several weeks. This team is also ensuring residents have access to medical insurance when insurance has been lost, but healthcare needs, including coronavirus, continue. These staff members also show up to complete protective orders because domestic violence doesn't stop during a pandemic, neither do restaurant inspections nor permits for building homes or businesses. Staff also work with the core system to collect child support for single parents so they can provide for their children during this crisis and beyond. So this work isn't glamorous, but the work being done does save and change lives. And I just want to take a few seconds of your time to highlight the work of Health and Human Services staff and thank them for continuing to be the unsung heroes of public service in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for Suzanne. Am I okay to ask that?
Yes.
Suzanne, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Suzanne, thanks for you and your staff, all the hard work that you all have and commitment that you all shown through this. I just have one quick question.
Sure.
Of the four active cases, are any of those hospitalized?
No, not at this time. They have had to seek medical treatment over the weekend, but they are not hospitalized at this time.
So they are quarantined at home, then?
Yes, they're in isolation at home, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Ms. Wright before we let her go? Just not a question, but just thank you for what your department has done and all your staff. We are really appreciative of that. You will never know, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, and Ms. Wright highlighting all those staff in those departments, that was great and right on point. We know how important they've been, and they truly are the unsung heroes. You don't hear about them a lot, but the work that they do is very impactful and means so much to our residents. So Suzanne, thank you for what you and your staff continue to do, and I know you've got to get back at it, so we'll let you go, and thank you again. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of things under this presentation that we just wanted to bring to your attention. All of you already know about this, but for the public, we've inserted the letter that was sent to Governor Cooper requesting the ability to come up with a local reopening plan. The Chamber's also noted by sending the letter to us regarding that. As Ms. Wright mentioned earlier, we continue to work with them and will be working with them. We had, Suzanne and I had our last conversation with Ms. Moser with the Chamber today as we continue to get information out to our businesses as soon as the state of North Carolina tells us kind of what the rescension plan and the phase plans look like. We're absolutely prepping and planning for that, so I want to thank the Chamber for their support in that and their letters noted in the agenda packet. No action needed on those, but then also information from Mr. Vogler about the executive orders, because I know we've received questions about those. So those are just supplemental information that we got in your packet, just so everyone's aware that those actions have been taken. So if anyone has any questions about those before we move on, we're happy to address them. If not, Mr. Chairman, we'll turn it back over to you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question. I have a request, if possible. I would like for, to be inserted in the minutes, and I would also like to be inserted in the documents that are sent to the Governor, if this is at all possible. The resolution that was passed by this Board, and I'll read part of it later in my comments, in February, on declaring Davie as a constitutional rights county. Is that possible to include those in the documents we send to the Governor?
From a legal standpoint, that would be possible.
I think it's appropriate.
Yes, I think that would be no problem at all on that, Mark.
Commissioner Jones, yes.
Thank you.
We can absolutely do that.
And we will need to have a vote on the proclamation when it gets down to that.
Okay, yeah, and I'm just trying to understand what, Mark, you're asking. Yeah, absolutely, we can send whatever we want to the Governor, I think. Are you wanting to send the resolution as adopted in February to the Governor as well? As well, yes. I think it's a very strong statement about our position on the constitutional rights of all of our citizens outside of the Second Amendment and on some of the issues that are related to the shelter in place, in terms of the position of the commissioners and the citizens of Davie County. Just kind of supplemental to the resolution we're going to vote on here very shortly.
Okay, but if we just sent the resolution as adopted in February, in addition to that, that would satisfy what you're asking for?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, I certainly have no issue with that. Okay, so does anyone else have any questions or comments about Roman numeral eight on the agenda, the presentation, the COVID presentation? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Kind of keeping in the same vein of the COVID, but John, you want to read the, you want to discuss the proclamation, or we've all got it in our packet, anything you want to say about it or add to it?
No, I just, I thank all of you for your feedback. We feel like this is a sound proclamation and just appreciate what each of you contributed to that. And I don't know, Mr. Chairman, it's the pleasure of the Board. I can read it, or we can just take action on it, depending on what you'd rather me do.
We all got it before us. I think we can just take action unless someone's got something they want to add before we vote. Okay, hearing none. So we have the proclamation in front of us, item nine on the agenda under new business, proclamation requesting Governor Roy Cooper to allow a safe and responsible reopening of Davie County, entertain a motion to approve that proclamation.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Richard, I'd make the motion.
Okay, Poindexter made the motion. Do I have a second?
James, second.
Second, Finney.
Okay, I think I heard James first on the second, so Blakely second. Any further discussion? Sorry.
We'll just tell Stacy to put everybody down.
That's right.
Everybody down, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we have a vote, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, well, Ed's going to call for an individual vote.
Okay, Richard Poindexter?
Yes.
James Blakely?
Yes.
Terry Renninger?
Yes.
Benita Finney?
Yes.
And Mark Jones?
Yes.
I'm just going up and down the road, those you normally would be sitting.
Okay, so, John, you're going to send that and the resolution that we adopted at the February meeting to, you could just send that from the county office directly to the Governor? Do we need to put a cover letter with that, or what do we need to do?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll make sure it gets where it needs to be, so we will send this proclamation that you just passed in conjunction with what was passed at the February Board Meeting regarding the Constitutional Rights Resolution.
Okay, and I think it would be a good idea to copy our Representative Howard and Senator Kravitz as well on that.
I will do that. I will do that. Thank you.
All right, moving along, do we have any old business to come before us this afternoon? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions or comments about the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, this is Richard. I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Finney.
Okay, Benita makes a second. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, well, I guess Ed?
Mark Jones?
Do the roll call, please.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Benita Finney?
Yes.
Terry Renninger?
Yes.
James Blakely?
Yes.
Richard Poindexter?
Yes.
All right, that is approved. Five o. All right, the next item on the agenda is the County Manager's Report. Mr. Eller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few quick things. I know that the past few weeks have been challenging for so many people. Many are out of work. Some hours have been reduced. Others are struggling in lots of ways, and houses of worship are already, all of us, I think, to get back to what life used to be. And I think this COVID-19 issue that we're dealing with has had such a tremendous impact on so many of us, and I think it's humbling to see the community rallying together, trying to unite for the good of everybody, everybody helping each other, whether it be our staff, our nonprofits, our churches, our volunteers, our responders, the list goes on and on and on. But it's just been great to see all the acts of kindness that continue to show up in the middle of this. I love the spirit of everyone and trying to come together and as resilient as we can be during this time, and we do want to keep on the radar of everyone right now, the resources that we continue to try to put in front of folks. Just another reminder, if you go to our county homepage, you'll find the shortcut buttons, is what we call them on the homepage, the little circular icons, and you'll have one there for coronavirus information. Citizens can go there to get daily data counts, the state orders, the timeline of events that have taken place to date, frequently asked questions, information from the CDC, our Public Health Department, lots of good information there. Our staff have done a phenomenal job to continue to provide services amidst all these current challenges we face. We tried to set up a hotline for people to call our Public Health Department, and then also not forgetting North Carolina 211 for information and referrals statewide the HHS continues to tell our citizens across the state about. We've also got several social media platforms, whether it be our county Facebook site, the Health and Human Services Facebook page, Emergency Services Facebook page, and then our YouTube channel, where we're trying to put weekly updates there. And then we also, again, as I mentioned earlier, are partnering with the Chamber of Commerce. We hope to begin rolling information out by the end of the week to early next week to our businesses in partnership with the Chamber and public health, so more to come on those things. You know, as it relates to which businesses are essential and nonessential, to all of us, I'm sure we would agree, everything is essential. You know, we miss what we had, but we've gotten some questions about trying to discern that, and we continue to refer people to the State Emergency Management Office who deems businesses essential or not. We don't do that locally, and so we'll continue to encourage them there, and we've got, we try to get information out to folks as they ask us that. In addition to that, if we get questions about the executive orders, we continue to refer those to the Governor's Office in Raleigh via the online platform that you can go to do that, or by calling 919-814-2000. And as people are obviously at home more than I'm sure that they would like to be during this time, let's not forget the census. I know EDC and us, and the Chamber, and others continue to emphasize the importance of our census. For folks who are there with their family right now, it's a perfect chance. We've really made tremendous strides with our census count. In fact, we're in the top five of the state. That didn't happen by not being intentional. We have been exceedingly intentional trying to get information out every chance we can, and we're going to continue to do that. It'd be great if Davie County were to finish number one in the state by response rate, given what's at stake, not only in Congress, but also locally with all the funding to so many people, not just government folks. So we want to encourage our citizens to continue to do that. We appreciate the commissioners' help and support with helping us spread the word. Anybody who has questions and answers can go to davieknows2020.com. You can also go to the 2020census.gov to fill it out online, or call 844-330-2020 to be able to complete your census. So there's multiple ways to get that done this year, more so than just the old paper way of doing it. You can go online or call, and we encourage our citizens to do that, because as I said, there's so much at stake right now with that. We continue to also work with the County Commission Association. We're having very frequent recurring phone calls following the action the General Assembly took over the weekend with the relief bills, and also working with the association to learn how that impacts us locally. I know this morning in Raleigh, several people were together signing those bills to make those, to really become real. We had several people down in Raleigh between the Senate President pro tem, Phil Berger, and then also Governor Cooper, and then ten more from the House as well. So I think the bipartisan support to try to get some relief into our businesses and our governments to really get things moving again, so we appreciate the action the General Assembly took over the weekend, and also what the leadership has done to help move that along and get it signed this morning. So we continue to monitor those things. We truly don't know what the impact's going to be at this time, but we know we're ready and willing to work with the Commissioners Association like we've done to date. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my update, unless anyone has any specific questions, so you can move on the agenda.
When is the, I should, I forgot when this is. Remind me when the census is over, as far as being able to fill one out, complete one?
They moved that date, Mr. Chairman, and I believe it's September 1 now.
Okay.
So we have more time to complete it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Eller? Moving along, we'll move to Commissioners' comments, so I'll call on Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be fairly brief. I just want to thank all the departments and leaders and workers at all the work that they're doing for the COVID-19. I think, obviously, by our numbers, that we've done an excellent job, and obviously by the number of cars in some of our big box stores over the weekend, it's time to let some of our little people open back up and do some business. We can still protect the people we need to protect. The people that are in danger can stay home, but we can get the backbone of our community, which is our small businesses, back to work and get them making money for their families and moving on and keep them from losing what they've worked so hard to have. Couple shout-outs. Of course, this week, Mother's Day. People don't forget to thank your mamas for everything they do, because I'll tell you, this mama right here works pretty hard. So early college graduations coming up. Davidson County Community College virtual graduation's Friday night, so I just want to wish all those kids well, especially mine, who will be graduating from both places. And of course, we look forward to hearing what the high school decides to do with their graduation. Today is International Firefighters' Day, so we are very fortunate in our county and our neighboring counties who support us to have excellently trained firefighters who do so mostly from the goodness of their own heart. And recognize our nurses and our school personnel this month as well. So we have a lot of people that do a lot of things for us that we need to take a moment to thank, and I just hope we all remember to do so in the midst of everything that's going on. Commissioner Jones and I were blessed to stick our head in the door at the reopen Davie Rally. I'm sure he's going to share with you about that. I just want to thank those people who came out to let their voices be heard and say a special thank you to Senator Kravitz. a special thank you to Senator Kravitz for coming and being with us and giving encouraging words this afternoon. So with that, I just say I look forward to seeing you guys in person, hopefully next time, and hope everybody has a great week.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Poindexter?
I'd just like to say thank you to all the people who have worked so hard to keep the people in our state, our county, and our country safe from the COVID virus that's been going around. All their efforts have not been in vain, and we really appreciate what they've done. I'd like to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, and thank you for tuning in.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thursday is National Day of Prayer. We last month passed a proclamation calling for Thursday of this week to be a National Day of Prayer in Davie County, and I thank the commissioners that have come before me, thanking our staff, thanking all of those that are on the front line of keeping us safe from this COVID-19, also keeping our schools, our homes, and our streets safe. And so I would just encourage everyone, I know it's still a time where we're coming back together, but to, on Thursday, to pray for this great nation that God has so mercifully placed us in. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just say this, thank you to all the mothers out there. I tell you, James is aware of this, but we run a, we run a pretty good-sized travel baseball program and softball program, and I'll tell you, if it wasn't for mothers, that thing would not happen. And we know how important moms are to the backbone, not only of Davie County, but of our country, guys, and so Mother's Day is a big day, and I just prayerfully want to thank each mom out there. Thanks to all our grads that are not going to go through their normal graduation exercises. We need to pray for them. We need to do everything we can to acknowledge them in our churches and our homes, and so I just want to pray for them and thank them. And last, I would like to say this. We, in February, we passed a resolution endorsing Davie County as a constitutional rights county. I'm not going to, I'm not going to read the whereas and therefore of that resolution. I would encourage each of you to go back and read it, and I hope the governor will read it, because I think it's where the people of Davie County are standing right now. We have four active cases of COVID in Davie County out of 42,000 people, and I simply ask you guys this, and I think you agree with me, I'm not sure, I'm not, you know, we're not Mecklenburg County, we're not Wake County, we're not Durham, we are Davie County. And there comes a point, and it's coming soon, when the citizens of Davie County who elect us to represent their interests are not going to accept anymore of us passing the buck to Governor Cooper and to folks in Raleigh. It is inherently unfair for box stores, parking lots to be filled to the brim, thousands of people going through box stores a week, exposing themselves to whatever. And on Main Street today, every small business closed. Is it fair for Walmart to be able to sell clothes and food and whatever, and our small businesses to be closed? Man, it's not. And I don't care what Governor Cooper says, to be quite frank with you. Governor Cooper was not elected by the people of this state, nor by the North Carolina General Assembly, or us to choose winners and losers in the economy of the day. It's not fair for liquor stores and abortion clinics to be open while our churches of worship are closed. I really don't care what Governor Cooper says. So, you know, I'm on the soapbox now a little bit, but this really, folks, is getting out of hand. We need, Davie County needs to represent and take care of Davie County, not Mecklenburg, Wake, and Wayne County. And so I just encourage us, as we move forward here, the day is coming when it's not good enough to send resolutions and proclamations to the governor. We as a county, we as elected officials, need to take a stand for the citizens of this county, and you guys are outstanding, you're great people. I know you agree with me. I just know you all, you're wonderful people, but I just feel like I have to say this, because it's almost a joke now to go by these box store parking lots and see they're parking, you can't even find a parking space, and then you go uptown in Knoxville, and it looks like a ghost town. It's not right. Not right. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your hard work, and I appreciate all you do, and hey, you guys, you guys have a great Mother's Day. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Mr. Blakely?
I'd just like to thank all the county staff, especially the HHS staff, and Suzanne, and all you've done in the front lines of protecting our county. I do want to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day, and how important mothers are to kids and even us, adults in our age now, and
Amen.
Building strong people, and they're always there for you. They're always your rock, so don't ever forget and cherish your mother. And then, you know, I would like to also express my feelings that we do need to open up, and open as soon as possible, and I agree that it's not fair on the small businesses, and I am a small business, and it's been tough on all of us. It's been, it's been very tough. But, you know, I would, I would recommend that we, you know, we emphasize we have with our resolution and our proclamation, but we emphasize to the senators and Joyce and those folks, those are the people that are in his ear. I mean, they've got to push him to help, to help us. And we've already acknowledged that, but those representatives have to push him. So we need to, you know, and I think she's working hard for, so we want to definitely reiterate that. So again, you know, pray for everyone and their family in this time, this crazy time, and that's all I've got. It's good to talk to everyone. I hope everyone's family is safe and well. Thank you.
Thank you, James. I would just like to echo what's been said here. I can't really add anything other than to thank everyone, and definitely on Mother's Day, you only got one mother, so make sure you let her know how much she means to you. With that, I look forward to seeing you folks in person next month. I pray that happens, and I do not see why it shouldn't, absent some, some event that we're not anticipating, so I really hope we can get going here next month in person. But with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. And I think Benita made the motion, and Mr. Poindexter seconded it, I think, if I heard that right. So all in favor? Okay. All right, Ed, you want to do your duty there?
Yes, if you'd vote. Richard Poindexter?
Aye.
James Blakely?
Yes.
Terry Reniger?
Yes.
Benita Finney?
Yes.
Mark Jones?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, and we will be in touch. Hey, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
And ladies, and ladies.